Everybody, I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission this evening. I'd like to call it to order at 6:00, according to the phone, 6:01, according to this clock. And we'll have roll call.
Chairman Cox.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Here.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
Commissioner Ferris.
Here.
And Commissioner DeHaan is absent.
Thank you. Would everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Lauren, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please stand up to me, face the flag, turn over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, sir, I would request change to item...
I'm requesting a change to item A.
This is on the agenda?
Eight, B, yes, the agenda. I'd request that we strike the second sentence. We're only going to be considering a vacation of right-of-way across this property, this APN. So, that second sentence, I'd wish that...I'd request that that be struck from the agenda.
You're talking about after the 11790 for four parcels?
Yes, that's correct. I'm requesting that second sentence to be struck from that particular agenda item.
Thank you. So, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with that correction? I so move.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
So move.
My second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. We move into the public comment section of our agenda. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to Brown Act, the Planning Commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name and address. We will now open the public comment section. Seeing no rush to the mic, we will close the public section at 6:04. Moving on to item seven. SPR 18-01, request by KBM Properties LLC and Norma Richcraft Storage Partners to construct additional storage units, 15,531 square feet, located at 1430 North Norma Street, APN number 419-020-02. Staff report.
This is a revised site plan for the proposed expansion of A American Storage at 1430 North Norma Street. Proposed is the addition of three new storage buildings. It is a general commercially-zoned property of about three and a half acres, and it's surrounded by mostly similar uses we have to the north Mission Bank, the south in Tively Center, Mobile Home Park, to the east, and Optometrist's Office of Dr. Mallory, to the There's the context. Now, this previously was brought to the Planning Commission last month, and the proposed additions were slightly larger, but the most significant change is going to be the removal of a previously proposed decomposed granite large-vehicle storage area. That area is now being left unimproved to be basically retained for future improvements. There was also some discussion last time around of the fact that there is not onsite detention proposed, or was not onsite detention proposed, to handle the runoff from a 10-year storm. These revisions somewhat address that point, but staff feels that there isn't enough detail provided about the onsite detention to adequately address the drainage concerns. And there you see the site as it is presently. So, for that reason of not fully addressing our concerns about drainage, we recommended that this application be denied.
That's it?
We do have a representative here from A American Storage.
And that's what I would like.
Josh.
Would you come up, please, sir?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you. So, before I turn it over to the public, I know that the commissioners have some questions for you.
Okay.
Because this has come back several times, and in fact, staff was questioned why it came back.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, are there any commissioners' questions that you would like to ask staff or the developer?
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, Josh Patterson.
I have a couple of questions for the developer.
Okay.
This is, I believe, the fourth time that we've seen this come back before planning.
Yes.
And every time the site plan comes back, it looks to be incomplete because there's no water detention or drainage issues that have been addressed.
Yes.
Now that it's back again, it's not addressed again. So, my question is, is it...are you wanting a variance on that? And would it be easier to go and see if we can get some sort of variance for that instead of just bringing it forward and having it denied multiple times?
The thinking is, is that we've already contracted a soils engineer, we already contracted them for a soils test, percolation, I believe, is what it's called. They haven't been able to get it done before the planning, before this next meeting. We've had, obviously, we ran into some issues with the budget after the first time it was approved, so we had to downsize the amount of square footage we did in order to make it fit into our budget. And then that's where we kind of hit this thing with the detention basin. We did propose two detention bases on the site from what the civil engineer thought was best, that is, I believe it's 22. They should be in the site plan, line item 22. There is one above Building F to the north, and then there is one just in front of the driveway, just to the east...I'm sorry, just to the east of La Norma. So, they were added. We can't give you the exact specifics. We will, you know, follow this guideline to make sure that they can handle a 10-year storm and everything else. It's just that we haven't been able to plan to get everything in place yet. We're working as fast as we can, it's not ready. Every month that it's delayed, you know, the thing's just breaking even right now, to be honest with you. So, the owners and stuff, they want to get this done as soon as possible. So, we want to work with the city, we want to improve the aerial on graph. We hope that if this first expansion works, we will add more, provided there is a need for more storage. We want to do it responsibly, we don't just want to come in there and build a 60,000-square-foot monster and only be able to fill up half of it and have a business that doesn't run successfully. So, that is basically the story where we're at right now. So, we should have the soils test. They were out here Monday. So, once they get the percolation tested, they give it back to send to our civil engineer, he will have the drainage plan and everything that you guys need. We just don't have it right now. But waiting another month keeps us from going and getting, you know, working drawings started, shopping for a loan, and, you know, we've already worked with...got proposals from Zern, Greenscape, and some of the local vendors up here, because we want to use as many local vendors as possible for the project, but we're just, you know, kind of stuck right now, best way to put it.
Is this unimproved land, is that intended to be large-vehicle storage?
Not anymore. He said...that's actually my bad, when I was reading through the code, I was reading the civil...the civil code, or I got the civil municipal mixed up. So, you can park it on DG on private property, but not on commercial property. So, RV storage isn't going to make or break the project, it was just an afterthought, like let you guys know that if we can put some in there, we would, but it's not...we don't need to have it that way. So, we'll just leave it unimproved.
And so, it's not your intent to use that for large-vehicle storage?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Colt, would you mind coming up, please? Because this map is small enough here, would you give me some definition? Am I reading this correctly? The outer lines here? Here? This is all paved?
That's my understanding, yes. Looking at the plan, trying to read the construction notes on the plan, that's my...
Okay. And the plan has come back and been reconfigured different ways a number of times. I'm now noticing an entrance here on West Graff. Is that new?
Yeah, the prior plan did not identify an entrance off of Graff. It would require a curb cut and an ADA compliant driveway approach.
And so, I didn't see anything in the conditions that required them an encroachment to put that entrance?
No, this particular site plan is not the one in which the staff had reviewed for the initial conditions. The conditions that you see currently were for the prior site plan that you had looked at.
Okay. So, now, if they leave...I have two issues here. The unimproved land, if they leave that bare dirt, there is a percolation there, are they required as much onsite retention?
No, the onsite retention would be reduced. And it's actually detention and not retention. They're not required to retain the full amount of runoff, they're just required to detain it and allow to retain the peak runoff. By them not having as much impervious surfaces there, their detention requirements are much less.
Okay. So, the only other thing is, is you've already grubbed this property, sir. You've already taken the native bushes off of this soil, and it's bare dirt. I'm wanting to know what your plan is for dust mitigation?
When we purchased the property, the bushes were already...we only purchased it in June of last year, so we didn't plow the black lot, it was already like when we purchased it.
Well, the problem is, is with the native bushes gone and the winds that we get across here, we end up moving dirt consistently. And so, part of our general plan and city requirements is dust mitigation. And so, if we're going to have traffic coming in and out of here, that's not going to be a hard surface, that's going to be fluffed, if you want to put it that way, on a consistent basis. And even with the aprons that are around the storage units, that could be a problem. So, I'm asking, what are your plans for dust mitigation?
We could change it back to having it be DG.
And that would probably be fine, wouldn't it, Mr. Colt? If they put the native soil, it wouldn't change the percolation, would it, if they put DG down to cut down any dust mitigation?
It would help the dust mitigation. In terms of drainage, you are changing the coefficient of runoff by changing the type of material. There is a difference, a slight difference, not a great difference, it's probably not significant, but you would be increasing the amount of runoff just by the change in the surface materials. But it should be able to retain or keep the dust down. It would still require some maintenance, of course. As traffic might pass over the DG, it does tend to break down, it does decompose, as it says. So, there would be some maintenance that would be required.
What about the drainage for gravel?
It would not increase it significantly. There is a small change in the runoff coefficient between DG and native earth materials.
So, they could put gravel on here and not affect significantly any of the perk, and so all we would be addressing is the detention and make that work. And then with the new entrance, there's an encroachment permit that's required on that new entrance.
Okay.
On Graff. So, I think that we can probably get through this without adding any other expense to you, but you'll need to put that on there and bring it back unless we can so condition it, can we?
Certainly, yes. And, you know, as a matter of fact, it'd be conditioned, they're going to have to have a building permit, and so the staff would have the ability to enforce those ordinances that are in effect at that time, or conditions or requirements in effect at that time. So, staff would have the leverage to ensure that the ordinance was complied to, and all the elements of construction of the detention facilities and encroachment permits and so forth would be accomplished.
So, the only thing that we would really need to add, we're not going to have to deal with the entrance, the new entrance, is to...is put in the condition that the unimproved land has gravel on it.
Yeah, this is your means of mitigating wind-blown dust and sand.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Anything that you'd like to present to us, sir?
Just that the driveway, I believe the architect put it in there for fire code, just so you have another entrance, because we're not going to use it as an ingress and egress, it'll only be an emergency entrance and exit, so I don't know that that makes a difference or not.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I turn any time over to the public, if the public has any comment in relationship to this. I don't see any comments, or anybody coming up for comments on this. So, I would look for a motion from the Planning Commission. The recommendation is to deny. I think if we add the condition of gravel, and it's not used for large-vehicle parking, and they will have to meet the building code, so that means they'll have to do the encroachment for the street entrance. Anyway, I think if we add that condition, we could probably approve it. But I'm not going to put out the recommendation, so am I receiving a recommendation of denial or approval with conditions, or anybody want to...
I move that we approve it with the conditions.
Which conditions?
The...yeah, with the...let me see how...
The unimproved land.
The unimproved land would be covered with DG.
No gravel.
Yeah.
If you do DG, then it changes the coefficient on the drainage, so that's what we went to.
I think we're saying...I was meaning the same thing.
Okay.
So, with gravel, and then we approve the process.
Do I have a second? Do I have an abstain?
An abstain.
What about the detention? Don't we need to have the detention on there as a condition as well?
Well, there's two detention spots that are already in here. The staff feels like that they're not significant enough. But the engineering report's not in yet as far as the natural soil, what the perk is going to be on that. So, as Mr. Colt had said, they're still going to have to meet the city code, so the drainage and the detention is still going to be required. It's just being determined how much.
Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
It should be noted that there is already a condition in the draft resolution requiring the drainage to meet the 10-year storm. But we just wanted to see more information presented as to how the detention basins were going to be constructed, and that was the basis for our recommendation, but there, you know, there is nothing preventing that being adopted as a condition of approval. In fact, it's already in there.
It's already in there.
Given that knowledge, I'll second the approval of this with the condition that earlier stated.
So, we have a first and a second with that condition. Gravel beyond in the unimproved areas.
You guys wanted the no use of the large-vehicle storage as well?
Yes.
And the encroachment permit for the street?
Well, that'll be automatic.
Okay.
They'll have to do that with their building permit.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Abstain.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. So, get them what they need and move forward. All right. All right, moving on to number eight, tentative tract map 12278, a request by Cornerstone Engineering to subdivide a 2.5-acre parcel into two commercial parcels located at 1409 North Norma Street, APN 4180309. Staff report.
This is a proposal to divide an existing commercially-developed parcel of 2.15 acres into two parcels, both of which would conform with the area zoning. One of the buildings on the site is currently occupied by the offices of Dr. Mallory, and the other, at present, is vacant. It's zoned CG, general commercial, and is surrounded by similarly-zoned land and similar uses, primarily a mixture of shopping centers and professional offices. It's categorically exempt, given that this is a minor division of land, and here we have some context.
So, leave it right there for a second. Okay, so where they're looking to split it is you see the TPM on this site, see that building? And you see the little building, right between the little building and that TPM building, from front to back, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, given that this proposed division of land is going to produce two conforming parcels and that they're both already fully developed, we felt that it was appropriate to approve the application. There is a list of engineering conditions which Mr. Witten, on behalf of the applicant, would like, at least some elements of which, to be reconsidered, and I believe he has prepared a list which we have distributed to you and his reasoning, and I believe he would like the opportunity to explain his rationale.
Mr. Witten?
Mr. Cox and Planning Commissioners, my name is Darrell Witten, I'm with Cornerstone Engineering, and we are here tonight to talk about a tentative parcel map for Dr. Mallory. Right now, Dr. Mallory owns a single parcel that has two separate office and lab facilities on it. Investigating the history of this project, at one time, these were indeed two separate parcels and two separate office slash building complexes. And for some reason, the prior owners merged them together. I think he wanted to build the third project, which was around the corner, he didn't want to mess with the parcel map, so he just merged these two lots together and created the parcel that he wanted for the third piece. But these are two standalone buildings, they have their own dedicated parking, they don't share any common utilities, they don't share any common driveways. And so, if this were in another jurisdiction, this would be done with a parcel map waiver, but there is no...there's nothing in the city code that allows us to do that, so we're here to do a parcel map. But all we're asking is for a map. This is not a project. These projects are complete and constructed, both buildings were put up between 1978, 1980, around there, so the onsite improvements, rather old, but they're still there. The conditions of approval that have been set out by the city engineer, I feel, have some problems, and I'd like to point these out and ask for revisions. Do you guys have my red-line strikeout versions of these conditions? Can you read?
Heather brought it to you today.
Now, before we go through that, Mr. Witten, have you read the revision?
What I did was, I took the revision that I received late yesterday, and I've edited it with a lot of...
Okay, as long as you got the latest revision, I'm okay with that, because I didn't get it till today.
Oh, no, I got it...
And so, I'm wanting to make sure that you have the correct one.
Right. What I've done, a strikeout and edited version of, was the revision that came to me yesterday.
Okay.
So, I think we're all on the same page there.
Thank you.
So, first of all, the street improvements, we are willing to concede that it's the responsibility of the applicant to upgrade the sidewalks around the site so that everything is ADA-compatible. And the corner, there's...right now, there's no ADA curb cut at the corner. Right, so, condition A1A and B are fine. Condition C, we would just like to insert, rather than remove existing sidewalk panels...I was looking at sidewalk panels, there are a few that have lifted a little bit, there's not any big trees around the sidewalk, so there's just a little bit of shaving that needs to be done to take some bumps down on some corners. So, I think if we could just insert the word "or shave"...
It has that, it says remove or shave existing sidewalks.
Yeah, the word "or shave" is underlined, that was inserted by me.
Okay.
That's my first request. The next one is condition A1E. Condition A1E...
Has been deleted.
Okay, well, I've deleted it. That's my...my request is that it be deleted. And the rationale for this is that this is a condition that requires an enforcement of a future event. This is not a practical condition of approval for the map because there's no way to enforce this condition at a point beyond the date of recordation. And besides that, this condition would be a requirement of any future tenant improvements.
Excuse me, just a minute. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do housekeeping, I am listening to you, but...
Yeah, what you're looking at, this red-line strikeout version, you can't see it in red in Word, it was in red, but where you see conditions that have been deleted, this is what I would like to have, the... this is what I would like to have the Planning Commission adopt it. So you can see the condition that was written in the staff report, and then I've deleted it. So it's got a line through it, that means this is an addition or, this is a, a condition that I'd like to see deleted.
Okay, I'm not seeing that, because all I'm seeing is a comment on condition and original draft. So all I'm seeing is your comments, I'm not seeing the original draft with your deletions.
Okay.
And if we need to make copies of that, we can continue this for five minutes while staff gets us that. The last one you just gave us, tonight? No, because this is the one that was given to me tonight, still has E.
Doesn't have that. We attached this one, so this will down-
Commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, this is what was given to me, and I'm- And then I've got this.
The red lines didn't show up, but on the back is the comments, which will show you-
Mine doesn't have.
Yeah, see, I've got a-
The staff report should contain the unrevised, or the, the first staff-produced revision. You should have a separate standalone packet that has Mr. Witten's requested revisions.
Yeah, let me see if I've got it. Okay, I do have it. Thank you.
Okay, to start at the beginning, does everybody have a copy of the version that says, "Remove or shave" in condition 1A, A1C?
Yes.
Okay, if you have that, then that's the, that's the insertion. I'm asking that the word "or shave" be inserted in there. Then down below, there's A1E, which reads, "At the time, at the time of application for tentative, for tenant improvements," which is at some point in the future, "an ADA complete access to, to the street structure for both parcels 1 and 2 shall be..." Okay, I, I get that, that should be done, but I don't under, I don't see how that's enforceable at the time of recordation on the map. It's a good idea, and I'm sure it'll be enforced when somebody comes in, in the future and wants to do tenant improvements. But it's not an appropriate condition on this map, because it's not enforceable. So I would just ask that it be deleted. Now, let's go to condition three. Condition three says drainage improvements onsite. And I would ask that this entire section be deleted. These conditions are either simple statements of fact, or they place conditions that have to be met in the future. Any future site work would open the door for the city to address the site drainage conditions. So as far as being a condition for getting the map recorded, I don't think it's an appropriate condition, because there's nothing that has to be done now. So I, I'd ask it to be deleted. Condition number four says, 4A says, "Any and all new tenants or owners or change in use of the structure shall apply for sewer service." Mr. Mallory, is there sewer service to these buildings already?
Yes, there is.
So I don't see the point of this condition. It's already been met. So could we strike condition four, the entire condition? Condition five has to do with street lighting, and there are two aspects of this. Mainly, it says, "coordinate with Southern Cal Edison and construct decorative street lighting along Norma Street and Reeves Street." Norma Street already has two streetlights on it. There's one right at the corner of Norma and Reeves, on the applicant's corner, and there's another one right across the street, on the opposite side of the street, on Norma, and it's in front of the gas station, the Spirit Gas Station. And streetlights along Norma alternate. There'll be one on one side of the street, then another one on the other, then up at the corner of, of Norma and Graff is another streetlight that's on this side. So I would argue that there's already plenty of streetlights on, on Norma. With respect to Reeves, if you go west on Reeves, there are no streetlights. None of the other improved properties along Reeves have been required to put in any streetlights. So I would request that this applicant not have to put in streetlights, just to get his map approved. Furthermore, there's a condition that says that he has to annex his property into a landscaping, lighting, and maintenance district, which has been a condition of just about every map in the city, but it's a terribly onerous condition. The cost to the applicant's probably going to be between $7,000 and $10,000 to pay the city to just create the district and then annex him in. And then, that's so that he can do maintenance on one streetlight. It would probably be better if, if you just condition the map to say, "He'll have to pay for that streetlight." I don't, you know, it's, the streetlight's already there, but to set up a district just to pay for the annual maintenance on one streetlight seems ridiculous, and the, these, these landscaping, lighting districts are very expensive to set up. They require a report, an engineer's report, and, and Lauren has additional overhead, things he has to do, and then the owner has to pay one year's maintenance in advance, which, from what I've seen from past projects, that'll be somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 for the applicant. So I just, I, I don't want to see, if, if he has to do that, it's just going to kill the project, or it's going to kill the map. So I'm asking that all of condition number five be struck. Condition six is seismic hazard zone. And my question on this is, I understand what Lauren is saying here in the condition, but is this, is he requiring a note on the map, or is this just a statement of fact? If he wants a note on the map, then it needs to, it needs to state such. If he's just stating something, it's, it says, "The subdivider shall inform any future tenant or owner of the proximity to the Little Lake Fault." I don't know how you enforce that condition, other than just putting a note on the map, which we'd be fine with.
It might be noted that in a real estate contract, on the due diligence, that has to be disclosed anyway, so I'm not sure why it's there either.
Right, they have to do seismic hazard analysis on, on all real estate transactions now, so the, any future owner would be noticed in that manner, so I would, I would request, then, that, that condition number five be struck. Moving on. Or actually, that's condition number six for seismic hazard. Moving on, the parcel map requirements. Condition 7A says, or this is A7A, "Prior to tentative parcel map approval, submit a detailed site plan as required by City of Ridgecrest Municipal Code." The site's already developed. There's no point in submitting a site plan. If you want to see the site plan, it's right up there, it shows you the two buildings, the parking lots, et cetera, so I'd request that that condition be deleted. Then, condition seven, A7C, no, A7E, says, "Provide covenant conditions and restrictions." Since these two parcels don't share anything, I don't see why any CCNRs would be required. They wouldn't, there's nothing that would be covered by CCNRs. They have their own parking facilities, there's no shared parking, shared utilities, or shared driveways, so I'd ask that condition, that that condition be deleted. And then, condition nine, B, "Design and construct fire protection hydrants or facilities per Kern County Fire Department." As far as I know, all these facilities already exist, so I'd like to see that condition deleted. Condition C says, "Design and construct miscellaneous support utilities necessary for development of the project." I think, I don't know why that one's there. The site's already developed, and the utilities are already in. So if we could delete condition C. And condition D, "The, the project plan shall be reviewed by police, fire, and emergency services for access and circulation." I don't know what they would review, the site's already fully developed, and, and so I'd ask that, that condition also be deleted. And then, condition A9I says, "Prepare reciprocal access and maintenance easements and agreements for parking areas and drivings to be shared." Let's delete that condition, because there's nothing that's going to be shared. So I'd, once again, the, my, the, the project applicant, Mr. Mallory, is willing to deal with the ADA access on the sidewalks around the site, and to fix the corner, so there's an ADA wheelchair ramp at the corner. But the rest of these conditions, either they don't have a direct bearing on the map, it looks like Lauren might have used some boilerplate from some other, some other project that don't apply to this one, but in particular, the street lighting condition is, is particularly onerous and expensive, so that's the one I'm most concerned about. But with, with that, I'm open to any questions or comments. Thank you for listening, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions for Mr. Witten? It's just clear as mud to you, right?
No, yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Witten, and I appreciate what you've prepared here. If you wouldn't mind, I would like to take just a few minutes, and I want to go through the resolution. Okay? And I understand where you're at, and, and I understand where staff is at, and the only reason I want to do that is because of your suggestion of deletions doesn't correspond with the resolution. And so the resolution's numbers don't meet up with yours, and so what, what you're suggesting is, it puts us in a, in a quandary. We can accept staff's conditions, or we can accept your conditions, or we can go through it and look at each one of these and decide what we would probably approve. What? And it's different than this one? Because I was going off three, and all three of them were different.
It could be that by the deletion by Mr. Witten of some of the conditions, that the subsequent conditions-
You're talking about this one.
Not, no longer numbered the same.
Would you like a copy of what Mr. Witten has that is striked through, so you can see it, as it compares to the final?
I think this is it, but the, the problem I have is if this is the one Mr. Witten wrote, and this is the one that staff wrote, which one do you want us to approve? And so I want to go through, I have the one from the staff that was given to me on my desk tonight. And if this is Mr. Witten's, is that yours? Yes, and I, and I saw a lot of those. Well, and he just gave me one. Okay, but this, this is the resolution, and, and so if, if we're going to delete anything, it's going to have to be part of this resolution. And so it's going to have to, we're, we're going to have to have some legality here, so that's what I'm saying, is we can make a motion to approve it with Mr. Witten's suggestions, or we can go through it and understand what we're deleting, because what he, what he said, in most part, just makes sense.
Right.
But is this what, after deletion? This is, this is the deletion after deletion?
Yes.
Steph has prepared one which is deletion.
This one. Because that's not the line item that he just read off from.
That's correct.
Because E, because E is still there, and he's deleted E.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir.
When I was using Word, I used their, their red line strikeout tracking, and so when I delete something, what it's done is it's renumbered everything below, and so when I, for instance, when I deleted condition three,
Yes.
It struck it out, and then it renumbered everything below it.
Correct.
And, but it shows you what the original numbering was, and the original numbering, of course, responds to the conditions that were, that were delivered to me yesterday. And so the, the red line strikeout version that you're looking at should have the same original numbers as was in the staff report.
Right. Okay, so on your version, of course, you struck out, for example, A5, street lighting, and on your version, five is survey requirements. And, and so that's why I'm saying to staff, is this the one we're going to go off from, or the one that staff prepared?
We should use the original numbering that staff prepared.
That's, that's what I think should happen. It should be this one, and we should go through it.
Yes, you can take the original draft, which should be included at the end of the staff report, and then each item, which Mr. Witten discussed, we can, you can examine the individual merits of, and determine whether or not you want to strike it per his request.
Does that make sense? So I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure when Heather does the resolution and I go up to sign it, I'm not, I don't have three versions on my desk like I have right now.
I only have one, so I don't know.
Okay. Anyway, so I would like to, I'd like to go back, and, and so the question I have for you, Mr. Witten, if, if we approved your deletions, he is prepared to comply by all those things that you've got there?
Correct. Mm-hmm. And the, the other items, for instance, there's a condition that says, "Trim existing pine trees along Reeves Avenue." So we'll do those.
Okay. Any questions from commission?
Don't have any questions, but I want to make a comment. I mean, that building has been vacant for a long time. I'd like to see that building occupied. I mean, we are looking for development and always moving on with economic development and want to see our empty buildings occupied, so these conditions, I think, are mainly for a new subdivision, so I totally agree with Mr. Witten that those conditions, some of them which he pointed out, can be removed, so.
So where I'm, where I'm going with this, Mr. Witten, is, is even if I've kept your version, in 1, A1A, "Remove all existing concrete, spandrel, curb, gutter, and sidewalks on the Norma and Reeves curb, return and design and construct ADA compliant curb returns and replace." Now, the question I have, come, on our staff report, come back to the aerial color view. Nope, one more. There's one in our staff report that has that detail a lot better, it's pulled in. This, this picture right here. Okay, so this bottom picture here, and I'd like a definition, the purpose of an ADA approach or a driveway that is coming in is so that the handicap have an opportunity to, to travel on a flat surface. In the city of Ridgecrest, we have a 10-foot utility easement, and in the event that you have a tapered driveway like this, then you can put an apron behind it. This sidewalk is level.
That one's fine. Some of the other driveways are not.
And it, the taper is in the driveway and not on the sidewalk. Now, we don't have, you know, our warning on each side of that driveway for, for handicap that it, there's a driveway there, but I'm wondering on some of these, because the condition, does it not say? But I'm wondering on some of these, because the condition, does it not say, excuse me, I'm going back to it. Remove existing, there is not, there's not a definition of this one, this one, or this one, so we're removing it all?
Miss, Mr. Cox, this is pertaining to the curb return. And there's no handicap ramp currently at the curb return-
At the corner.
At the corner. Yeah, this condition applies to the corner, where it says curb return and replace the spandrel. Now, I don't know if the entire spandrel has to be replaced. I was looking at it today. There's a big power pole right in the middle of where you'd put a normal handicap ramp. So we're probably going to have to do a custom ramp that's either to the north of the power pole, or to the south of the power pole, wherever there's room for it, which means we're not going to have to remove the whole curb return. But I'm confident that whatever we come up with, Lauren will work with us, we'll come up with an ADA compliant ramp at the corner, so that the corner is conforming. To me, this condition says we have to bring the corner curb return up to ADA standards. And so-
The corner I can understand. I'm just questioning whether or not all of it has to be replaced. The expense is astronomical.
Yeah, I don't think it'll all have to be replaced, but some of it will be. Because we're going to have to take, we're going to have to demolish the existing sidewalk, either replace the existing curb return, or we shave, or we shave the curb down, so that it's, you can grind the curb down to be flush with the adjacent concrete, but it'll require construction plans and a modification of the curb return, so that it meets ADA standards. And Caltrans has details, there are a number of different ways to tackle this, and Lauren's always been very accommodating to help us figure out how to deal with the existing. There's a bunch of utility boxes on the corner, too, that we're going to have to work around. So I don't think we're going to have to demolish the entire curb return, but there's going to have to be some work done there.
Well, I, and I guess my concern, and this would come back to the city engineer, is that because of the power poles and other things, I wouldn't want to, oh, by the way, this doesn't meet ADA, and so you're going to have to pay to move the poles. And so I'm concerned that the language is ambiguous enough that it could be open-ended, and I don't want it to be open-ended. So that's why I'm coming back and asking you and your client if you're okay with these conditions that you've presented.
Well, if you want to make this more compact, we could simply strike the portions that don't say, you'll notice on the second line, after the word "and," it says, construct an ADA compliant curb return. We could simply change this condition that says, construct an ADA compliant curb return at the corner of Norma and Reeves. And we can accommodate that. It's a pretty big area, and I think there's room on the north side to put in a curb ramp.
Would you be okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, first of all, I'd like to say that, you know, staff does realize that these conditions are onerous for such a small project. And the conditions that are stated here are standard conditions for any land division, and that's a parcel map, irregardless of its size, it's standard conditions for a tract map, irregardless of the size. The municipal code is silent on how to treat smaller development projects, smaller land division projects. So, first of all, I want to say that this, staff does realize the onerous nature of these conditions. As far as that curb return, staff's review, we did a field review and found that the existing curb, or the existing return was a monolithic pore, meaning there are no cold joints there. That when the, when the return was constructed, it was constructed in one solid pore. And so we didn't, staff didn't see a convenient method of removing any of the return at an existing cold joint. And what it would require to do anything different would be saw cutting in some fashion to create this ADA compliant driveway. Now, saw cutting something existing can lead to some problems, and it's all dependent upon the condition of the existing concrete. If there's cracking there, if there's any deterioration of the concrete or the surface there, then that might go astray. So, the safe bet is to reconstruct the return in some sort of a standard way. Now, the location of the return, the location of the ramp can be adjusted, but if we do anything other than constructing a standard ramp, then you're going to have something that is maybe not of standard, and then subjective in terms of the quality of the workmanship and the end product. So, but staff is willing to work on that. If there is some way in which we can find that the existing concrete is competent, and there's not a lot of cracking there, and we can, if it's acceptable to all that we do saw cuts that can construct this ADA ramp, well, I'm more than willing to try to accommodate them. But just to let you know, there's some potential there, depending on the competency of the existing concrete that's there. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I also, you know, the, staff has a little concern on the use of shaving of concrete. Staff doesn't have a standard much to go by there, so this is going to be a very subjective thing. It's also going to establish a precedent, in that staff simply doesn't have any criteria for what the finished product might be for shaving. Now, there's been several attempts at that throughout the city that I've found, and there's varying levels of quality or workmanship to that. So it's a very subjective approach to trying to remedy a non-compliant or a trip hazard. Now, staff does recognize that this would be much cheaper, and would be an option, but I do need to caution you that this would be establishing a precedent. Others will want to be treated the same way, and that your staff does not have really a standard to go by, or a quality of workmanship that we would judge such work.
Thank you. So, Mr. Witten, jumping down to his point, one of the concerns that I might have in relationship to areas that we might sand down, so that we don't have a trip area, is I've driven over to this property, and I'm asking a question more than anything else, because I don't remember where all the pine trees are. In most cases, if we have lifted sidewalk, we can have heat-related consequence that causes it to lift, but we can also have pine tree rooting that causes problems. So if we have areas that are being lifted by existing landscaping, I would suggest, not only if you're going to shave it, that that tree comes out, because that's going to be an ongoing problem, which will be an ongoing liability. And so that's the only point that I would have. And I don't know that you have any, I know that you have in the medians, you know, in the parking areas, you have some trees, but I don't know if we have anything close enough to the sidewalk to upset it. Do you?
There are some Mexican fan palms that are adjacent to the sidewalk on Reeves, and there's a big pine tree that's, it's near the sidewalk, but I think it's set back maybe eight or 10 feet, but it's right at the west end. It's right at the very end of the sidewalk. And then beyond the sidewalk to the west, there's nothing. There's just a dirt lot. So, I'm not aware of any trees along the right-of-way that-
Palms are generally not the big problem, because they're ball and-
Right.
-small root. It's more of a, you know, your pine trees and that that would cause that, so. So, coming down here, in, in any of these conditions, I would ask the commission, do you have concerns relative to the original conditions to the suggestion of Mr. Witten's?
I don't.
I don't.
Okay, so, Mr. Witten, if I've got the correct one that you've given me, I have a number three that says seismic hazard zone.
Yes, but it's only number three, because it should have a six next to it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that's redundant, as you talked about, because, yes, it sits in a fault, and yes, he could tell somebody, but that's a full disclosure in the due diligence of a real estate contract.
Right.
So I'm wondering why we have three at all.
Okay. It's, it could be deleted. As far as I'm concerned, it's a-
It's just a notification. I don't care if it's there.
Right. It's going to, it's going to happen. It's just, it's an unenforceable condition, so I would, I don't care whether it's there or not, but it would be cleaner if we struck the condition.
Okay, and so you're okay on the parcel map requirements entering into an improvement agreement between the city and the subdivider prior to the final map approval?
Well, that will only come into play if the proposed public improvements are not complete. But that's a normal part of subdividing by parcel map. But usually, what would happen in the sequence of these items is we would, we would take care of the sidewalk issues, the ADA issues, and once those have been signed off and accepted by the city engineer, then there's no need for an improvement agreement. That condition would just go away, because it's unnecessary.
Any comment from the public? Thank you, Mr. Witten. Thank you. Just a minute. Any comment from the public? Comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Staff would like to give you a perspective here on these conditions. The conditions that we have here are municipal code requirements, and are established by ordinance. So staff would caution the commission on waiving some of the conditions. Now, what staff would be willing to endorse would be an appeal to the city council for offering some relief of the conditions. The lighting requirement is very specific within the municipal code and called for. The parcel map requirements are very specific for the improvement agreement and the improvement The staff does not have the discretion to waive those, nor does the planning commission by the fact that these are in the ordinance requirements in which the city council has the only authority to waive those requirements. Now, Mr. Witten makes perfect sense in his approach and his desires for his client here, but I have to caution you that these are established by ordinance in which the city council has the only body that has that authority to offer any leniency or grace. I did want to mention that staff did have a requirement in there for CCNRs, and also for the preparation of reciprocal access maintenance for driveways. There is a connecting slab that goes between the two parking lots, and you can physically drive from one parking lot to the adjoining, and that's the only reason that particular, those conditions are in there. Now, if the slab goes away, there's no physical method of going from one parking lot to the other, fine. There's no need for CCNRs, and there's no need for reciprocal access or maintenance agreement. But there is, right now, a slab that does connect the two parking lots.
What is this retaining wall down here on the bottom? Doesn't that divide the two parcels?
No, it doesn't. If you drive the drive aisle going north, directly in front of Dr. Mallory's office, there is a slab directly crossing into the adjoining parking lot. And it's apparent that whoever the prior lot merger had prepared wanted to enjoy being able to get from one lot to the other, or from one parking lot to the other. So I just caution you that there is physical method of traversing from one parking lot to the other, and if so, if that is utilized, then there should be some reciprocal agreement for maintenance and for access rights.
Okay.
So, and that's the only reason that's in there.
Now, many of these, I looked up a number of these, and many of them says, if the planning commission so desires. It doesn't say have to, it doesn't say must. There's a lot of conditions that says the planning commission, if they so choose. And so when you use the language that it's absolutely mandatory, which ones are you talking about?
Well, I would, I would have to go back and review. I just don't have them committed to memory, but the most part, if there is a, if there is a municipal code section, it also cites the ordinance. And if indeed there is that provision granted to the planning commission by all means, but I do caution you that many of the ordinances, if not all, unless there is something of exception that I'm not aware of, really doesn't offer the planning commission that opportunity or ability to waive ordinance requirements. I might also mention that, that the conditions here also are a record, a permanent record for the planning commission's actions. The planning commission has a fiduciary responsibility for the public's health, safety, and welfare, and that's what staff looks at. When you see something like that the project is to be reviewed by the fire, emergency services for access and circulation, or to construct fire improvements as necessary, you know, the public is going to occupy these structures. And these parcels, or creating these parcels, have a potential for, potential for land sale, or to be leased, in which the public's going to occupy these structures. And the unknown condition there is that we don't know what's inside that structure. We don't know what sort of fire facilities are there. We don't know what has been done by prior owners to that structure, to know if the public's health, safety, and welfare are intact. Therefore, staff has put together what are standard conditions that do, number one, give notice, and be of record, that we have given notice that there is this concern for the public's health, safety, and welfare, for fire protection. So, that's the purpose of this, is to make sure that the, an innocent person buying the property, and that the city has some record that we have evaluated the project and given notice, that there is that potential, and has recommended that fire be looked at, police, as well as emergency services, have an opportunity to look at the project and offer suggestions for the public's safety.
Okay. So, let me, let me give my thoughts on this particular subject. I own a commercial building in the community, and when you sell it or you rent it, the fire department, as a recourse, and you get a building, or a business license to occupy business, the fire department, as a consequence, automatically comes and inspects it, and gives you a list of things that you need to do to comply. My concern is, with this particular addition, is that we're taking a building and we're saying we're going to ask it to be, comply with current fire code and fire suppression at the expense of the individual. Dr. Mallory is wanting to divide the two parcels into two, and should the second parcel be developed, some of these requirements would be required by the developer. In order to get a business license and occupy the building, it would have to meet fire code, and so on and so forth. I am not sure to divide this property, that that is a necessary qualification in the health and safety of the community, because it's going to have to be met at some point anyway. And so although I appreciate what you're saying- you're saying, what he's trying to do, I'm not sure that it's, that it's something that we have to do. Having said that, Commission, and we've spent a lot of time on this, unless there's anything from the public, I, to, to meet Lauren's concern on any municipal code that we might not be able to judge for ourselves, if, if the owner and Mr. Whitten feel that this is acceptable, I've looked over the differences, and the original, you can see I've marked up, and, which is contrary to a little bit of the original, I would suggest maybe, Commission, that we accept the revisions that Mr. Whitten has given to us pending city council approval. So we approve it, send it up to them. If there are municipal codes that we're deleting, that they can either approve or not. I'm not asking them to rehear it. I think that if there are, if those, some of those codes are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, because I went through a number of them that were, then it's done, but if there is one or two that is the privy of the, of the city council, I would suggest that maybe those two items be brought to their attention solely and not try to rehear what the planning commission has gone through. And so that would be probably my suggestion. So, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I read something?
Yes, sir.
On the municipal code nineteen dash one point four advisory agency, the planning commission is hereby designated as advisory agency with respect to subdivisions and parcel maps, as provided in said subdivision map act, and shall have all powers and duties with respect to subdivisions and parcel maps, the maps thereof, and the procedures relating to thereto, which are specified by law and by this chapter. So by way, by virtue of this, I think planning commission has authority to do something in this case.
I did talk to the city attorney, too, and he advised that we did, but if there is any question in your mind, I am suggesting that caveat. If there is not, then in your motion... Do I have a motion?
I'll so move.
Move what?
The new resolution.
Do we accept what?
The resolution with the strikeouts as...
Provided by?
Provided by Mr. Whitten.
I second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. W... Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Moving on, we move down to B eight B. This is a vacation of public right-of-way, consideration of a recommendation to the city council to vacate the portion of the public right-of-way access APN zero three three dash zero five zero dash one one, a request by Walmart, Walmart Stores, Inc. for the proposed amendment. Now, we'll just stop right there at Walmart, Inc. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a procedural matter. Typically, on any kind of a tentative map, the, the subdivision map act requires any utility or any person that has any interest in property, either, either in fee or by easement, to be identified on the, on the tentative map, and the, the process of identifying rights to property and also the subsequent disposition of that property is, is identified on the final map. So this, this item is somewhat redundant, but at the advisement of the city attorney, he requested that we go ahead with this, what's called a summary vacation of the right-of-way. A summary vacation of right-of-way is simply where we conduct a public hearing, we notify utilities, we send out notices, and we then conduct a public hearing relative to the vacation of that right-of-way. In this particular case, I think we have an exhibit there to show you what, what's proposed. There's the old College Heights spur that traverses this particular APN, and the utilities, all the improvements have been constructed for this, for this particular project in which all the utilities have been satisfied. They are secured in their rights of, of occupying easements that exist. The vacation of that right-of-way is for the public's use, and therefore, that's what's, what's requiring us to have this public hearing. So staff's recommendation would be to open up the public hearing, hear any public testimony, and staff's recommendation would be to make recommendation to city council to go ahead and vacate this right-of-way.
No utilities in it currently?
Yes, sir, there are, but they have been secured and they are within their own easements. There are no, there are, all the utilities have either been relocated or have been, or occupy their current position and are secured in their position and retain their rights of, of use and of maintenance of those utilities.
Thank you. Commissioner comments?
Just have a couple of questions. Is this being used by public now, or is there any traffic?
No, there is not. The site has been completely improved. There's no physical evidence of the public utilizing that right-of-way, and it has not had any evidence of usage by the public for many years, so that it has a, a long history of not having public usage.
So how is this going to help Walmart? I mean, by vacating the public access?
The, it simply removes a right that the city has for the public to utilize that right-of-way.
Thank you.
It simply eliminates the public's use of that.
Thank you, Mr. I think also, Mr. Kulp, also, in, our easement now transfers into China Lake Boulevard, and there's a ten-foot utility easement there, is there not?
The, well, the, we, we currently have a sewer easement that occupies this alignment. It is just to the north of the fifty-five foot right-of-way that we're vacating our public usage of, and the city retains the usage and rights to that existing sewer easement. Now, there are utilities that have been relocated over to China Lake. They occupy the public's right-of-way. They do not occupy it by any other right, but by having rights of, in a public right-of-way for both public as well as utilities, they have rights to occupy the public right-of-way.
Right. Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, by vacating this, we still have public right-of-way on China Lake Boulevard.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes.
Where utilities and so on and so forth, so we're not, we're not eliminating our access to the properties.
No, no, by no means.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, just so, just so I'm clear, I just, we're just talking about, for tonight, we're just talking about having a public hearing about pursuing this.
Yes, the, the requirements for a summary vacation requires to have a public hearing, to hear public testimony on the vacation of that right-of-way. There could be someone that has some interest or usage or history of usage of that, and that's the purpose of having a public hearing, to allow the public to come in and make some claim of, of the usage of that particular right-of-way.
Now, would that be city council?
Well, city council is the only ones that can officially vacate. It requires the planning commission to first conduct the public hearing and take any public testimony, and then make recommendation to the city council for the vacation of the right-of-way.
So we would conduct it. That's what I was after. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, so we will turn it over to the public. Is there any comments from the public?
Jim Folgager, two oh seven, West Cobblestone. Just one question. At one time, Lauren, wasn't there a, a plan to put a bike path through there, that same area? It seems to me that that was one of the original considerations for that particular right-of-way.
Yes, I believe the planning commission had requested staff to take a look to see if, pardon me, if there was some physical way of putting a bicycle path across this same access, and staff did indeed take a look at that. And with the current improvements that are there and the plan for the structures that are going to be there in parking lots, it would be a significant, it would be significantly impacting the future users of that, of that property. It could be considered a, a separation of, of rights to be able to utilize the property by, by offering some physical means of pedestrians or bicyclists to utilize that access.
How would the commissioners know that without being able to see the buildings?
Well, the, the only way would be to look at the original site plan that was prepared for the project to see what the relationship of the proposed structures and their parking lots would be relative to this alignment, and it, it truly does bisect and would significantly impact their ability to utilize their, their parcels.
Again, I'm not sure if the commissioners recollect this. I'm not saying you don't, but there was a, a lot of interest when that bicycle path was put in coming down off of College Heights to come onto the Walmart property and go on through, not, not only to just access the Walmart property, but, so right now, that bike path sort of just peters out up there at Dolphin, I believe.
Yeah, it's currently going to Dolphin. So Jim, one of the, one of the things that the commission did last, I'm thinking, summer, we talked about this, looking at the feasibility that should these lots be developed, that in the utility easement in the front area, that we look at the feasibility of asking them to build the bike trail through, across, through those, front of those lots bordering China Lake, and that was something that staff was going to look at the feasibility should they be developed. And, and so the bike path was not, not abandoned. We were looking at alternatives, and, and so that's the alternative that we came up with.
Okay, so, just one final point. When the city has something to give away, and, which is fine, and we're looking for something that will be of public benefit, that, in this case, runs almost across the same ground, I think it's a good time to, to request, in a formal way, actually, that the bike path option be, how would you put, put more concrete? That's my suggestion, rather than let it hang out there. And of course, you might know where I'm coming from, because we have a hard, a hard time getting Walmart to, you know, give us things that they, that they think they possess. Here, we have things that we could ask them, and it's not asking too much, to, it might even benefit them, to put that in concrete for the city as a requirement to, for vacating this access. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Do I have a motion?
We just need to set it up to council, right?
I make a motion for vacation of public right-of-way.
An aye second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to nine, commissioner items and comments, committee reports. Start with Mr. Ferris.
Economic development. We discussed the ICSC show in Las Vegas and are strategizing about going there. We've hired a new...
No.
Never mind. We're looking at hiring somebody new, a new economic development consultant, and discussed the, the upcoming website and calendar that we have yet to see from RECBB.
Thank you. Mr. Yates?
City organization, couple items that we discussed. One was we moved the meeting schedule from the Tuesday to a Monday. Another agenda item was, which was a pretty good one, was dealing with the prohibition of smoking in the public parks. So we discussed, the chief of police was there, gave us a really good report, and some of the ordinances that he had pulled up from some of the other cities about the setbacks of someone smoking around playgrounds, ball fields, and such. So, there's more to come on that. We actually sent that to city council with a price of a range of dollar amount for fines, so, for the city to adopt that ordinance. We also discussed future agendas, items we're going to be talking about, property and sales tax quarterly, that pretty much.
We don't have a city ordinance presently that, that talks about public property, not smoking on public property except in designated areas?
No, not for the parks, not for the parks, public parks.
I was thinking it was a broad brush, all public areas?
No.
That are controlled by the city?
We do not.
Okay. Surprising. Okay. Mr. Rajaratnam?
Same.
Okay, so, we did have an infrastructure committee meeting, and I was absent. I was in San Diego, and it was this last Thursday. They did discuss paving of our streets, whether to do a microfill, which is what some of the improvements have been done recently, is a microfill, or chip surface. And so, I, I don't know what other significant things that you guys talked about. Do you remember? Sure, come on, come on up, because I remember getting the report on the, on the machine and stuff. I think there was a report on the sewer plant, or an update on it? That's okay.
How about if I turn it, that better?
Yeah.
Bart Lauer, Public Works Director for the city. The main two items that were discussed, there was a discussion on the slurry machine, and whether that was going to be purchased right now or not, there was no final decision made, as well as during that discussion, they talked about some of the work that's going to be done this year. And then on the sewer plant, the discussion was mainly that the letter is still on the undersecretary of the Navy's desk, and hopefully that we would have some form of movement before this summer.
So no deadline on that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, commissioner comments. Mr. Ferris?
Mr. Yates? Yes, I just wanted to say thanks to city engineer and also the staff for, this was kind of a difficult one, and to the commission, I want to say, a good job, because I feel that if we continue to send things up to city council, then we're not doing what we were appointed to do. So I know some of these... So I know some of these decisions are tough, but for what we can handle on this level, I think it would be pertinent for us to continue to do so, so, thanks.
Thank you.
We just want to thank Mr. Culp for his hard work and due diligence. I mean, I know he puts a lot of time and effort into this, truly appreciate your hard work in this. Thank you very much.
I, too, would like to thank our city engineer and, and staff. This was complex in its nature, but simple, and I understand looking out for the city, and I don't want you to think for one minute we did not hear your concerns. And so I, I appreciate you doing that. Future agenda items, does the commission have anything that staff needs to put on as future agenda items? Staff, one of the things that I asked was for, to ask you about past projects that had come and future projects to kind of give us an update. We talked about things like Arby's and Starbucks and, and different, different things that were kind of in the works, some of them put on hold, some of them that went forward. So I think that would be part of the future agenda items. I would like to see us address a little bit at a time, the municipal code, there, everybody acknowledges that, that we have some ambiguity on some of our spots, and, and tonight was a good example of some of that, and I'd like to see some of that come forward as a future agenda item. Staff items?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Based on what you just said, we had talked as a group already about starting, because we recognize the problems with this one from today, starting with digits of the municipal code. At what point does the planning commission want to be involved? And I know that it's going to be three or four of us sit down and look through and see what you think needs to be done.
Well, what, what I envisioned, and you might get recommendations from the city council, maybe, is that truthfully, what we're here to do is do the heavy lifting. And so you have, you have a staff or a paid staff that, that can go in and say, well, we should this and this and this and this. But the purpose of civilian oversight is the idea that we also have input. So when we serve on infrastructure committee, we have input, we give direction, we vote, same thing here. Although the municipal code would be changed by the council, I would like, as we did with the Wal, with, with this vacation of easement, is I would like to come in, and this is what the code says, this is where we would like to take it and have a discussion, and that the planning commission recommends, not staff recommends, but the planning commission recommends to city council approval. And then that way, you get a civilian group that, that would maybe have input or say, no, I think that that's completely appropriate. And, and that's what I envision. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I, I know with first being appointed to this commission, I thought that was one of our duties, was to go through there and make the changes along with staff. That's what I thought.
But Cal, I want to make sure I understood what you said, all right? You said that staff would go through, because decide what changes, set it up as a, this is what it says?
Discussion item, or...
And then bring it to you here as a discussion item, or did you want, this is what?
You're going to have to ask the attorney, because that may be, just like the vacation, the planning commission is making a recommendation. We're recommending that you make this change as part of a resolution. They're the ones that are going to have to sign the resolution, okay? But here's the resolution change, and, and so we're signing off and saying, we recommend this resolution or this change, or however it legally has to be worded for the council to vote on it. Because council's going to have to vote on it, and it's either going to be by resolution or however it's done. And, and that's the form it should come to us. This is the change, this is what you're recommending to the city council. You know, I think the discussion should be here so that they can look at it and say, the people that we've appointed have, have listened to it and discussed it with our staff and recommend this. There doesn't have to be some long discussion or, or make the city council five hours over it. And so I think we can do the heavy lis, lifting. Now, if that needs to be a public hearing, if we're going to change it, however it needs to be legally, as a recommendation to the city council. So if we have the public hearing, so they don't have to, that's fine, too. Let us do the heavy lifting, and we can just take one bite out of the apple at a time so that we're not trying to overwhelm, but we do need to make some revisions. Is that clear to everybody?
Yes, it, it may please the commissioners to know that specifically, some of the sections of the code which are, were cited tonight are being considered for review, and that we hope to bring suggested revisions both here to the planning commission and to infrastructure committee as appropriate. We believe we can streamline and preempt some of these issues that we saw tonight going forward.
Very good.
Very well.
I, I think the goal of everybody, including staff, we want, we want people to come, we want them to develop, we can't make it so hard that it's just not cost-effective for them to even show up. And, and I think everybody's on board, and I think some of the, the code could be worded differently or, or whatever, and I think, let us do the heavy lifting so that we put the recommendation up to the city council, and, and they'll either like it or they won't, and they can send it back to us if they want. But if the public hearing has to be here, let it be here. Okay, any other staff item, future and past, any report on the things that are crossing your desk? Tell me about Red Rock Villas.
The planning consultant is working way at it, and he has made some other, found some other changes, so soon, you'll be hearing it soon, maybe April, the soonest.
Well, let's, let's stay with this. I know that the Navy would like to see the apartments come in, but, you know, aside from that, some of, some of the conditions that we're stuck with, or, or that maybe we can tailor a little bit, because I, I talked to the engineer, I talked to the developer, and they're right at the point of not coming. And, and so the time, time has elapsed, and sometimes what we'll find is, is that you kind of strike when the iron's hot. So this comes back to if we make it so hard that they won't, they won't come. And, and so we, we need to encourage them to come. Otherwise, the dollars and cents doesn't pencil out sometimes when you're talking about repaying a loan of that nature. And, and so let's make sure that we work with them and not just sit back and, you know, check on them, see what you can do, what we can do as a, as a city to help them down the road. Any other projects that, that we've heard recently that you can give us a report on?
At present, there's not much coming down the way, but we will diligently report on whatever does get presented to us or, or any submissions.
What about the self-storage on Inyo, Inyo Street?
We've had neither submission nor any correspondence from the owners of late.
So you are waiting for information from the owners? There is a self-storage expansion, phase three on Inyo Street, rich gray self-storage. So, I mean...
Yes, essentially, we are waiting for a submission or, to hear from them. If they have any questions about how to proceed, we'd be happy to advise them on how to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, any other items? If not, we'll adjourn this at seven forty. Thank you.